Good morning. Under additions, we have items 2.12 through 2.14 and items 3.28 through 3.31. Under deletions, we have item 2.12. Under corrections, we are continuing items 9.2 and 9.6 to November 6th and item 16.1 to October 16th. And we're taking item 3.7 off calendar. And under notations, items 3.5 and 5.1 need to be voted separately.
All right. Thank you. With those corrections, I'm going to, in additions, going to move the admin action calendar and the consent calendar with the exception of item 2.5. We have to speak around 2.5 unless there are any other items to be pulled by members of the board. Okay. The motion, and a second, please vote. Motion is unanimous. All right. We'll take item 2.5, Ms. Ledwig. You have a request to speak on item 2.5?
I just want you to make a brief statement. I was happy to see that this item was on the agenda. And maybe the residents can also benefit by getting a pick to assist us in the recovery from your decisions and injustices that you have committed. Thank you.
All right. I'll move approval of item 2.5. The motion, and a second, please vote. Motion is unanimous. Supervisor Benoit voting yes.
I vote, I suppose.
Okay. All right. Now, to our policy calendar, any items by members of the board to be pulled? We do have two items by speakers, 3.8, 3.24, 3.26, 3.27. Active for items. Supervisor.
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, 3.5.
Item 3.5, please, and 3.28. Supervisor Ashley.
Okay. I'd like to, 3.3. Okay. And let's see. That's all. Okay, also, 3.31.
3.31?
Yes.
Okay. Any others? All right. Just to check, make sure we have no speakers for the remainder.
We haven't had the board comment period either. I'd like to...
My apology, yes. All right. We'll go, uh, ask for a motion on the remainder of the policy calendar with those items.
Second.
Motion, and a second, please vote. Motion is unanimous. All right. My apology, we are going to go back to board comments. Supervisor Ashley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to give you, make you aware of an award won by the police department of the city of Reno Valley, which is our sheriff's department through contract. And, you know, traffic collisions, fatalities, and injuries are serious issues facing every community in California. Reno Valley's law enforcement officials have taken it upon themselves to address these crucial community concerns. Reno Valley Police Department is proud to announce that Director Chris Murphy of the California Office of Public Safety, Traffic Safety, and Commissioner Joseph A. Farrell of the California Highway Patrol recognized the efforts by the Reno Valley Police Department in 2011 to lower traffic accident-related deaths and injuries. Reno Valley Police Department received first-place honors and special recognition for speed awareness in the California Law Enforcement Challenge, a competition between law enforcement agencies of similar size and type that recognize the best overall traffic safety programs in California. Reno Valley Police Department Traffic Division has also earned the second-place award in the National Law Enforcement Challenge. OTS has also specifically honored Officer Eric Robinson and Corporal James Hamrick for their individual efforts in DWI, DUI, and traffic safety enforcement in 2011. Officer Robinson was recognized for identifying and arresting 324 motorists driving into the influence of alcohol or drugs. Almost one day, more than one day worth. Corporal Hamrick was recognized for issuing 1,762 citations for driving at unsafe speed. Actions by both significantly contributed to the safety of the drivers of Reno Valley community. So we thank Reno Valley Police Department for such a good job, and our sheriff's department, which, of course, is an integral part of it.
One officer wrote 1,762 citations?
Yeah. That was 1,762. He didn't catch me. I don't know why I didn't get one of those.
A lot of citations. Good work. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Any other comments, members of the board? Okay. Mr. Executive Officer, any comments? No state budget update, so then we'll go back to our items from the policy calendar. First item polled, Supervisor Ashley, 3.31? Excuse me, 3.3.
3.33. It's an approval agreement to form the Lake Elsinore Canyon Lake Nutrient Total Maximum Daily Load. That's TMDLs. Everybody's heard about TMDLs? This is a task force that affects the first, third, and fifth districts. And I'd like to have Dusty Williams or Mike Shetler or both to come up and explain what this program is all about. This is a, this is a very extensive program affecting every agricultural land and has a huge impact on landowners within the western Riverside County and the San Antonio watershed.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman Tavalloni, members of the board. Mr. Orr, Mike Shetler with the county executive office. I'm the MPDS, former water administrator for the county. Supervisor Ashley, thank you for bringing attention to item 3.3 and its companion, item 11.2 on Riverside County Flood Control and Water Conservation District Agenda for the Lake Elsinore Canyon Lake Nutrient Total Maximum Daily Load. In 2004, the Santa Ana Regional Water Quality Control Board placed both Canyon Lake and Lake Elsinore on the Federal Clean Water Act 303D list of impaired water bodies. On December 20th of that year, the Regional Water Quality Control Board issued a total maximum daily load requirement for nutrients. In response to the TMDL, the county, Riverside County Flood Control and Water Conservation District, as the principal primatee along with 11 cities, the agricultural community, allied local, state, and federal partners within the San Jacinto watershed formed a TMDL task force to implement tasks identified in the nutrient TMDL mitigation plan to improve water quality of both lakes. The action before you today is to continue that process and extend the cooperative agreement to 2017. This agreement will help the task force pursue grants and other funding opportunities from local, state, and federal sources to help offset costs of implementing the various tasks within the work plan. The county's annual contribution to the task force is currently set at $40,000 per year, and costs could escalate depending on what preferred alternative treatment processes for both lakes are identified. At a future date, a cost share formula will be derived to fund projects or a project for Canyon Lake such as the irrigation system currently in place in Lake Elsinore. In-kind activities will be factored into any cost share agreement and brought before this board for consideration. Mr. Dusty Williams, General Manager, Chief Lake Control Engineer, and Mr. Jason Neely, Chief of Watershed Protection for the Riverside County Flood Control and Water Conservation District are here to provide more technical detail if you desire.
Yes, and also, there's a, it's not just, you know, the county bearing load, but landowners, particularly the farmland where the nutrients are used, are being, you know, they basically have to join in an effort to measure the impact and their mitigation, and join in the mitigation. So it's really a far-reaching program. And all the landowners that have farmland are having to fill out these forms and agree and sign and pay fees right now to help, you know, to come up with the, with the program to try to fix this. So this is suddenly, this little program is starting to, sort of, is starting to bite and get teeth and, ultimately, we'll hopefully have some results to help, you know, make the lake, the two lakes cleaner and safer. So, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Good work. We have a motion to approve item 3.3.
We approve.
Second Supervisor Ashley's motion, item 3.3, please vote. Motion is unanimous. Supervisor Ashley, did you, did you want to pull item 3.31 or 3.30?
3.31.
3.31.
No, that's one.
Okay. All right.
3.5 says the fifth district gets fourth district ready. Supervisor Benoit's going to speak with them.
All right. We'll go to item 3.5. Supervisor Benoit.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item was noted yesterday in our discussion of the agenda, but perhaps because it was listed as the fifth district and not the fourth district, we have no notice of this item. My staff is asking an app to put her over, however, before I do that, I'd like to have someone from the executive office give us some background to determine whether or not to, are there any special concerns to justify putting it over, or what impact that might have?
Good morning, Chairman, board members, Supervisor Benoit. I've been shown from the executive office. Putting it over is not going to affect our pricing schedule, but we apologize for lack of notification. It should have been fourth district. It was an oversight on our part, and we'll make sure it doesn't happen again.
Okay. Could you explain what it does and allow you to get some background?
Sure. In 2003, we had issued some bonds to build facilities which were used, the Coachella Valley Animal Campus and Mecca Family Service Center, as well as the Community Health Clinic. We have now an opportunity to refund these bonds and save about a million dollars. And the county's policies are 3% savings. This one will incur about a 5.65% savings for the county. So this is an opportunity that has presented itself, so we thought it would be a good savings for the, for the county. And then there's funds available that can be used for other purposes as you go along.
You say savings, you mean rate or?
Debt service.
Debt service.
Principal interest that's being paid to bondholders. We will be paying 5.65% less to the bondholders.
Okay. Savings. Yeah. I don't see that there's necessarily a reason to put it over, but I would appreciate a little more...
Our apologies. We will make sure that doesn't happen again.
Given, given that explanation, I'll move approval of 3.5.
Second.
Motion, and a second, item 3.5, please vote. Motion is unanimous, taking us to a public speaker on item 3.8. Ms. Ledwig.
More additional architects, huh? 33 wasn't enough? No wonder you wanted the fast-tracking to come aboard. You're getting them all lined up to start kicking butt? Oh, excuse me, the bottom part. The sad part is, is that the only people benefiting is real estate developers and construction. Is this what you meant about getting Americans back working again? I don't think so. And I do not believe any of this is going to create new jobs. You're just putting the unemployed back to doing the only thing they know how to do, and that is why we're all here. Some of us agree, and some of us don't. And I can respect that. Thank you.
All right. Move approval of item 3.8.
Second, please vote.
Motion is unanimous, taking us to item 3.24.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and our esteemed attorney. 3.24, this fee reduction, in my opinion, is initiated by your popular action to throw money to the developers. The project in hopes that it will change the economy. Recovery is not anywhere in sight, so get used to it. So don't show our taxes away. By the way, how many county employees will have to go for this reduction? I hope you give that consideration. Thank you.
All right. No further speakers on item 3.24. Move approval of item...
Second.
Motion, and a second, please vote. Motion is unanimous. Taking us to item 3.26. Speaker, item 3.26, Kenneth Dixon. Mr. Dixon, please.
I believe there's an error. I was going to speak on 3.27.
Okay. All right. I'll put you in the list for 3.27. I will move approval of item 3.26.
Second.
Motion, and a second, please vote. Supervisor Ashley.
3.?
No, you need to vote on 3.26.
Sorry.
Okay. Motion is unanimous. Now, taking us to item 3.27, we do have a few speakers on this. Mr. Dixon, why don't you come back up, and then we'll call on Irene Long?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and board members and staff. Apologize for the confusion there.
Sorry.
Appreciate your work and your time. My name is Kenneth Dixon. I live in Murrieta. And like many people, I suppose, if you appear here and make comments, I, at this stage in my career, I'd like to say I labor under the disability of having a law degree and an economics degree.
Right.
That said, I come here to speak and support this item. I, I know that the proponent has been through an extensive, rather amazing process of bringing this to this point. I've been keenly aware of that in my individual capacity as a citizen of Murrieta. I do have a background in environmental law, marked Air Force Base, that I bring to this comment, but I do believe that this is altogether appropriate matter for you to approve. It is a safe, responsible way to increase economic activity and, yes, not only in my area, but throughout the region, and I appreciate your bringing this to this point.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Next, Irene Long. Irene has nine minutes. Time given by Bill Smith and Ken Orr. Irene.
Good morning, Chairman Tavalloni, supervisors, Mr. Orr and Ms. Attorney. I'm sorry. Okay. I'm here because I support saving lives. I support resilient communities, families, and businesses in the aftermath of disasters. I'm going to share with you a story about the future of Riverside County, as told by Lucy Jones and 300 other scientists who were commissioned by President Bush to study for a year the likely impact of a major quake on Southern California. I'm going to focus the information from that study specifically on Riverside County. Riverside County has, in the event of a 7.8 quake, which is what the study was based on, and keep in mind we're capable of an 8.2, which is significantly larger, Interstate 10 in the Coachella Valley will be severely damaged. Interstate 10 in the San Gorgonio Pass will also be severely damaged. Interstate 15 in the Cajon Pass will be damaged. California 111, California 62, and Box Canyon roads specifically are all listed in this study as likely to incur the most critical road damage as a result of such an event. Other Southern California lifelines cross the fault and will break. They include 90 crossings of fiber optic cable, 39 crossings of petroleum and natural gas pipelines, 21 crossings of railroads, railroads that are critical to bring in the supplies we will need from the Port of Los Angeles to get to the inland empire to repair the damages of such an event. There are 32 aqueduct crossings and 141 overhead electrical power line crossings that are expected to break. Repairing critical lifelines in the Cajon Pass will require having access to them, and having access to them will mean making repairs to Interstate 15. What do we need to repair Interstate 15? Aggregate. What do we need to repair water and sewer lines? Aggregate. What do we need to repair railroad beds? Aggregate. Where will we get that aggregate? That's really up to you folks today and this vote. Businesses will be unable to function because of lack of electricity, gas, and water, and a transportation system. So Riverside's recovery is dependent on where and how quickly, and whether we have to wait in line for the resources we need to repair our critical infrastructure. Riverside County's southern Coachella Valley will suffer the most significant liquefaction. I would like to show you a picture of it. This is a picture from the study. This is a picture from the USGS study of high and moderate liquefaction. The highest liquefaction you will see in the picture is in red, and that is in the lique, is in the Coachella Valley. The yellow areas are moderate liquefaction. Now, what does that mean to our businesses and to our homes? This is a US Geological Survey picture taken of a liquefaction event in the wake of Loma Prada earthquake. This event occurred in Lost Landing, where the displacement was only three to four feet. We are expecting a ground displacement of 10 to 44 feet, not three to four. So, and this was very moderate, low to moderate, actually, they classified it as low ground shaking. We're not expecting low ground shaking in the Coachella Valley or anywhere else in Southern California from this event. So what's it going to take to bring back our homes, our businesses, those wineries, those casinos, our schools, our hospitals? It's going to take aggregate. I applaud your vote for fast-tracking last week, or the week before. I was not here, I'm sorry I wasn't able to make it, but I strongly encourage you to continue down this path to provide local access to the key resources, specifically aggregate, needed to recover and restore our life in this community, in this county, more quickly. And please keep in mind, you are voting on behalf of the residents of all of Riverside County, who will all be impacted in such an event. Finally, please participate in the Shakeout, October 18th at 10:18. Please drop, cover, and hold on. And if you do nothing else, because we're expecting it to take six months to restore the water infrastructure, please store water. Thank you.
Thank you, Irene. Just want to just mention and commend Irene Long. She is a resident of Eastvale, moved out there, one of the early residents of Eastvale, before it was ever thought of to be a city, but has really taken the ball and gone with it in terms of educating not only her own community, but the region as it relates to disaster preparedness, and very much appreciate your leadership in that, Irene. Next speaker is Bill Perez. Bill is going to be followed by Gary Johnson.
Good morning, Chairman Tavalloni, members of the board of supervisors. I'm Bill Perez. I'm a lifetime resident of Riverside. I also represent the Building and Construction Trades Council of Riverside and San Bernardino Counties. Building is our business. Craft workers is who I lobby and speak for. I support, in a rising support of item 3.27, which would approve the amendments, ordinances 348 and 555, allowing for fast-track authorization for desperately needed projects, promote private investment, increase employment, and increase our county tax base. In one week, nothing has changed except for one thing. It appears as though we are increasing employment of lawful, legal people, lawyers and their firms. I had a call from a friend of mine in Temecula. Yes, I have a friend in Temecula. This morning, saying, read the paper. I was at the council meeting last night. Looks like we're, you're going to, as a county taxpayer, you're going to pay to defend another lawsuit. And I said, well, that's terrific, because as a Temecula resident, you are now paying to defend and bring an action again. You're paying both ways. I'm not sure how you win in that situation. I think this is ludicrous. I think it's time to keep moving forward, let these, let the actions go where they, where they shall go, and let's get this thing on the right track, keep it on the right track. Please support 3.27. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Gary Johnson, Gary will be followed by Noretto Aguara.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Gary Johnson, representing Granite Construction Company, here to voice support again for these amendments to the ordinances that would allow projects to be fast-tracked if the board so desires, to help spur private investment and spur job creation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Noretto Aguara? Norberto.
Trying to read the correct...
Norberto? Okay. Well, come back. Jacob Garcia. Jacob, please come forward. Jacob will be followed by Alan B. Wilson.
Hello. My name is Jacob Garcia, and I support the recordings, and I believe that this will help bring more jobs for us. I've been waiting for a job for a long time, and I'm pretty much sorry to be on unemployment. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. I'm curious, when did the, what's the number 29 on your shirt? It's a big one. What's the 29? I'm curious. What's the, what's the number 29 for?
This, uh, we're going over to the Riverside Venture Center. I was number 29 to enlist on, for supporting the quarry.
Oh, yes, we're going there. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jacob. Alan B. Wilson.
This is Ivan.
Okay. Is this Nor, is this Norberto?
Ah.
Come on forward.
Okay.
Please.
My name is Norberto. I support for, um, let me, um, I don't know if speaking in this...
That's okay. Speak, speak in your own language.
Okay. Vengo de, de, I don't know.
Spanish.
Spanish. Oh, vengo de la, de la, on, de 1184. I support for 1184.
Okay. Go ahead.
It's okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
All right. Gracias.
Okay.
All right. Uh, next is, we already had Jacob, so Alan?
Yes, sir. Yeah, Alan Wilson. Yeah, yeah, I hope we fast-track it. I'm thinking, we've had a long recession, and so we'll probably have a big, big boom, and we're going to need a lot of roads and improvements for safety. And, you know, we're just plain lucky, we can have a quarry here. It's good providence, so let's do it.
All right. Thank you, Alan. Tim Flood. Correct last name? Did I say that correctly?
Yes.
Pleasure. Okay, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have a problem with the, my house, it's, um, it's, the permits, I did garage conversion on 2010.
Okay. Hold on, hold on one second, Tim. Are you here on item 3.27?
I'm sorry, what?
Are you here for item 3.27?
I'm here.
I don't think you're here for item 3.27. So why don't you look at the agenda and check the number to the far left of whatever item you want to talk on, and then just let me know what number that is.
All right.
And then we'll call you up when that time comes. Even if we've already taken it up, we'll bring you back. All right. Paul Jacobs, followed by, followed by Gary Grant.
Good morning, Lord Benoit of the inland...
Good morning, Lord Benoit of the Inland Empire and Subserbian Supervisors. My name is Paul Jacobs, a peasant in your eyes, but also a candidate for the Temecula City Council. It is clear that you don't give a whit about the public hearing process, municipal planning, or representative government. Supervisors Benoit, Ashley, and Tavalloni, you do not represent the will of the people. You represent only the will of Granite Construction. As you prepare to destroy the gateway from San Diego to Riverside County, it will literally be etched upon the hills that this is mine country, not wine country. Riverside County will suffer more economic hardship as you kill the tourism industry that employs thousands of people. You will leave Ronald Reagan's shining city on a hill blanketed in a cloud of dust and diesel particulate emissions. You will kill one of the very few golden gooses that attract visitors to Riverside County. Since you are determined to stick a knife into the back of Temecula and surrounding communities, I only suggest you call it something other than fast-track, so people don't get confused with the toll roads you are going to inflict upon the commuting peasants of your not-so-fair empire. Why don't you call it a bypass bamboozle, since you are starting with the thoroughly vetted denial of Liberty Quarry and the public planning process? You could call it the lockout of local control, since you want to dictate projects far from the regions you represent. Or how about the direct dictator process of death that bypasses local control and threatens the health and quality of life of a community? Supervisor Stone, you have done an excellent job trying to protect Temecula from this travesty of devastation. So maybe an acronym could be used, such as DROPP. Developers Rule Our Process. God forgive Supervisors Ashley, Benoit, and Tavalloni. It seems beyond my mortal ability to do so. God bless Supervisors Buster and Stone for trying to do the right thing, and God help us all.
All right, our next speaker is Gary Grant. Gary Grant will be followed by Rebecca Ludwig.
Good morning. I want to start first with recognizing the fact that you will pass this process. This project is complex, and signed and directed by the supervisors, reviewed by the Planning Director, Caroline Sims Luna, and the County Council, and Tina Grandin of the EDA. Regarding authorizing the okay to drop the CEQA requirements, it is my understanding that the average citizen should understand clearly what our government is passing. This project appears to be bypassing that every action creates a reaction. It appears that someone will gain, but I doubt it will be we, the people. Thank you.
Next speaker Rebecca Ludwig, followed by David Thompson.
Good morning. You are definitely not listening to the people, and I firmly believe you will be paying the piper on this one. Congratulations. All of you have finally succeeded in pissing people off royally. You continue to ruin the environment, the quality of life, and I'm sorry, you need to really go back and just study Biology one oh one. The air quality is horrible in the state of California. I don't care what they tell me. Any quarry that is built has air quality issues, and let's not forget the explosions on a daily basis. And let's not forget the Indians who have the first right to this country, and we invaded them, and now you're screwing them. Shame on you. Good luck.
David Thompson is our next speaker, followed by Betsy Lowery.
Chairman Tavalloni, board, we appreciate your support. My name is David Thompson. I live in Temecula. I've lived out in wine country. It's a beautiful area. I do concern myself with what happens there. That's why I'm wearing green today. It's not just a fashion statement. I own a construction company, and we need the aggregate. I do support, and hope that you do as well, support the fast-track authorization. We appreciate your forward thinking, and we appreciate this approval. I have with me letters of support, which I'd like to hand over.
Yeah, just get them to the clerk, please.
And we'll do so. And again, we ask for your approval on this matter, and we thank you for your just... Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Betsy Lowery. Betsy will be followed by Robert Mayby.
Good morning, honorable supervisors. My name is Betsy Lowery, and with the City of Temecula, I'm a senior management analyst. I'm here to reiterate what the Temecula mayor, city council, and city attorneys have expressed to you on behalf of thousands of citizens in your southwest region. That is, fast-tracking surface mining projects is inappropriate public policy, and the proposed amendments today are illegal. The City of Temecula urges you to reconsider adopting these amendments as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lowery. Robert Mayby. Mr. Mayby will follow by Julie Walz.
Good morning, Robert Mayby, speaking. I oppose three twenty-seven. I believe that surface mining permits in this area should take more, not less, time. You pick and choose what ordinance as you want to enforce. When you fix an ordinance that's not broken, it seems to benefit a supervisor or friends. Supervisor Stone, who has been prosecuted by the Attorney General for corruption two times and fines, should excuse himself. Supervisor Stone, you have in your pocket a report from the Corps of Engineers that the flood control channel in your district would fail because of the county's modification of levees without permits.
Mr. Mayby?
Your idea of fast-track is...
Are you here to talk on? Item three point two seven? All right, then I guess you don't need to speak on the other items. All right, next speaker is Julie Walz. Julie Walz is going to be followed by Britt Holstrom.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It appears that the only time you listen to "we, the people" is when it comes time for your votes. This article's in the Press Enterprise about the people in Temecula, and they oppose the quarry, but you're not listening to them. And then these other articles, these advertisements, "Business and Labor Unite to Support Fast-Tracking Jobs." I'm all for jobs, but are these jobs going to be given to the people of Temecula? I mean, how many jobs is this quarry going to create that's going to be given to the people of Riverside? And I know that this is going to go through today, because you'll always vote three to one. I don't really know who should get the Academy Award for what you're doing. I mean, it's, these ads are just really too much. It's about jobs, or is it about your special interest groups, and not the people of Temecula? Remember, gentlemen, you work for us. We voted you in, and we can vote you out. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Julie.
Good morning, board members. I'm glad I arrived in time to hear about this fast-tracking and also this subcomponent, sub-issue pollution. I'm waiting when you're going to fast-track the elimination of pollution in residential areas. I started asking for you, Mr. Buster, and the Air Quality and Air Resources Board to do something about that years ago. As a matter of fact, nineteen eighty-seven, actually I started with Mr. Youngla. Nobody's paid attention, I got nasty letters, so trying to shut me up, very, I mean, I almost went to verbal blows with Mr. Buster many, many years. I haven't even brought up the topic until this morning again, but I should continue now. So when am I going to fast-track that? Generally, however, I am against fast-tracking. Everything requires planning. And is Valerie Wright and Mr. Grant correct? When they accuse you, board members, as they, I do with former board members, then you're not paying attention to us. As a matter of fact, in the last couple of weeks, when I've called in to ask questions, I've had my nose pinned back. I've had verbal encounters with your gatekeeper, secretarial staff. I mean, I shouldn't even have to have that. I'm a peaceful person. I'm an issue-oriented, solution-oriented person. I don't want somebody battling me when I call in to make a suggestion or to ask for information. Have I gotten any information? Only two packs. Okay. One, I got two weeks ago from Ms. Ashley, which I will address next time. And the reason I haven't addressed it yet is because I was denied doing a courtesy information session with you guys. You didn't accept that. So now we're going through the Riverside Hospice mass, and I have to donate three, each of my three minutes to discuss it up here. It should be dealt with elsewhere. You don't put us on the agenda. You push us back. Our concerns are not addressed. So I'm going to start using my three minutes now, step by step by step, and we're going to have a revision of how things are done here. But the fast-tracking of the pollution down in Temecula, just because Mr. Calvert doesn't want to have it up in Corona. And what is your relation to Mr. Calvert, Mr. Benoit, and Mr. Tavalloni? Has he been talking to you about wanting to get rid of pollution in Corona, so he's shutting it down to Temecula? I don't know. I'm just wondering, okay? There are a lot of stuff that are not on the surface that I don't understand yet. Trust me, I will be digging it up, and I will hold it responsible. Thank you.
All right, there are no further speakers on item three point two seven. Request by the board to speak. They have a motion. I'll move approval of item three point two seven. Oh, Supervisor Stone wishes to speak. Okay. Supervisor Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I kind of feel like the trains left the station, and I'm running behind trying to catch the caboose, but I'm not going to be able to catch the caboose on this issue. What this ordinance ultimately is going to do, it is going to stifle public input. I personally believe that we are fully circumventing CEQA. I believe that we're abusing CEQA, and I believe it's a flagrant disregard of CEQA and why it was created, which has induced yet another lawsuit announced by the City of Temecula last night against the County of Riverside. Mr. Johnson, get your attorneys ready to go, because you're going to be spending some money. And our record of defending CEQA lawsuits in this county is not impressive. They talk about the reason for doing this, new job creation. I would love to see the names of all the green shirts that appeared before us at the Riverside Convention Center, talking about all the jobs that are going to be created. And I'd like to see you after this quarry comes to fruition. I'd like to see how many of you actually get employed as a result of this quarry. I think we're going to have a lot of disgruntled citizens that thought they were going to get jobs and aren't going to get jobs. I've never met Irene Long, but I have to say, I applaud you, Ms. Long, for your dedication to preparedness for natural disasters for which this county has been the beneficiary of, whether it be earthquakes, flooding, and fires. I applaud you and all the time that you've put in there. You mentioned that in a severe earthquake of magnitude seven point eight, that we could see devastation to Road sixty-two, Highway ten, Highway fifteen, Cohone Pass, one eleven, and that as a result of that, we're going to need significant aggregate. I don't disagree with you. We have a quarry that's closer than where the Liberty Quarry is going to be built, is in Indio, that could provide plenty of aggregate to satisfy those needs. And if there's any roads in Temecula that are damaged, certainly Rosemary Mountain, which has cut back on production, could certainly be geared up. I really regret that our Board of Supervisors is ignoring forty thousand Southwest Riverside County citizens that signed petitions that were brought before us in a wagon at our hearings at the Riverside Convention Center, and that the Board of Supervisors is flagrantly ignoring not tens, but hundreds of local physicians that don't have a dog in this fight, other than to do what they were upheld to do when they took their oath of becoming physicians, and that was protecting the health and welfare of their patients. We are jeopardizing their health by uncertainties. Uncertainties that my fellow colleague, John Tavalloni, fully articulated as a reason why he voted against the project after a thorough vetting. We denied this project at the Planning Commission at the Board of Supervisors, and yet there are those that say it's been fully vetted. It's been a fully vetted project that was denied by the Board of Supervisors, again by uncertainties that this project creates by a majority of the Board of Supervisors, and yet this board now is willing to look at a mirror image of that project that will have the same significant impacts of the prior project, and for political expediency is going to rush, rush to judgment and get this thing approved for the benefit of businessmen that have significant financial interest in this project ultimately being approved, that will be filing a fast-track application as soon as legally permissible. Unfortunately, this issue has divided our board significantly. I regret that it's happened, but I have come to the conclusion that all the objective data, subjective urging, begging by the two supervisors that really represent the area is going to be dismissed. And ultimately, for all the citizens, we are going to have to wait, because this project, this fast-track, isn't going to be decided by the Board of Supervisors. It unfortunately is going to be decided by the courts, and probably at very significant expense. And for those reasons, I can't support it.
All right, thank you, Supervisor Stone. Supervisor Benoit.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I would reiterate my support for the fast-track process, and just respond that this is a project, this is an ordinance related to a project and other projects that will have county-wide, region-wide impacts, not just in one area where the physical location of a project is, but county-wide and region-wide impacts. I respectfully disagree with a lot of the comments that have been made by the opposition. We continue to have that, I hope, respectful disagreement, and we need to move forward. The one other thing I would say is that with regard to the vetting of this project, I cannot remember, nor can I find anyone who else remembers a project that has received more hours of public testimony, more detailed scrutiny than this particular project that may be impacted by this ordinance we have before us today. There is no effort here to eliminate the possibility of even further comment on that project should it come back to the board. It's simply the opportunity for this board to once again hear and consider. to once again hear and consider those comments and the project as a whole. So I, once again, move approval of the item.
Second your motion? Motion carries three to two. All right, now taking us to item 3.28. Supervisor Benoit.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item would appoint me to the CSAC Board of Directors. I am deeply honored to have that opportunity to represent this board in front of that august group. But I did feel that it was important to make a comment, only in the sense that I know that some frustration, and I certainly share it, exists on the board as to what CSAC's role was with regards to the legislation in our four cities. And I argued very strenuously in front of the CSAC Board for the sanity, the fairness of making those cities whole, and we lost that argument. CSAC has reached out to me in the last week, asking me to be a part of a group to look at additional legislative efforts to fix that. I certainly share the frustrations I've heard from a couple of colleagues that maybe we should drop out, or my goal, if I'm appointed to represent this board at CSAC, will be to do the opposite, to get more deeply involved, to become involved in leadership, if possible, of that organization, and to try and move forward the agenda of large counties as a more significant piece of CSAC's, CSAC's role. I think that there are perhaps a dozen large counties who get 12 votes and represent 70% of the population of the state. You know the numbers, Mr. Chairman, better than I do. And then there's 50 or 48 counties that represent a very small percentage, but carry a 48 to 12 vote in this organization, a 48 to 10. So just if this is approved, I just wanted the board to understand that that's my perspective, that we need to get closer and more involved and remain a part of the, very active part of the CSAC process.
Thank you, Supervisor Benoit. As the past member of CSAC, soon to be the past member in a week or so, it's good to know that you're willing to take this on. It is, it is a tremendous amount of work and dedication from our board member to work on behalf of this board with CSAC. And it is challenging, as you mentioned. It does get challenging because we do, in fact, the 12 urban counties, we do, in fact, represent 70, roughly 70% of the population, but yet we are less than a third of the counties' voting members. So it's important that we keep that process going and the education going. I think it's critical in the next month, excuse me, next week, we should be selecting to do executive director of CSAC. That's our hope. And I think that is where it all starts in terms of leadership and balancing the needs of those small suburban and large counties. And there is also a divide, unfortunately, between counties and cities, as we saw here early on many years ago in our county, where many of the cities and counties didn't necessarily get along. We seem to, for the most part, work well together, but that's changed a bit over the years up in the state due to the League of Cities. Rebecca, you'll have your opportunity to speak when you take the mic.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And so we appreciate and applaud your willingness to do this, Supervisor Benoit. And put that on the floor.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Please vote.
No, Mr. Chair, I applaud.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jim. I thought you were.
First of all, I certainly applaud Supervisor Benoit for wanting to sit on CSAC. I think Supervisor Tabaloni did an outstanding job as the head of that board, but I would be remiss if I did not mention my disappointment with CSAC. And the position that they took with 1098, that was very influential on the governor vetoing that bill that put four of our cities in peril. And I'm not sure that the fourth largest county is always going to be in agreement with CSAC that professes to have the best interests of counties in mind. I know that CSAC has taken a position recently to endorse the governor's taxes that he's got on the ballot this November that I oppose. I want to find out where the board is on the taxes in a state that refuses to have their employees paid for any portion of their pensions, which would save this state billions of dollars and help us get out of ready before we start asking our citizens to tax themselves. So I'm going to be putting that tax measure on the board agenda so that we can take a position and find out whether we're in alignment with CSAC or whether we oppose CSAC again. And so I hope that with Supervisor Benoit's political experience in the past, that he's going to be able to effectuate some change on a board that seems to run contrary to certainly our best interests in Riverside County. And there may come a time in the future when we need to reassess our affiliation with CSAC and whether or not we're gaining benefit by belonging to CSAC or whether or not we're truly getting benefit. So I'm happy to support you, sir, but I look forward to your leadership in effectuating some, some conservative change at CSAC and making sure that before they make letters to the governor with respect to any county in this, in this state, that it is properly vetted, properly communicated, they're properly educated, so that we don't see the kind of debacle that we saw with 1098, that is going to create significant financial uncertainty and peril for the four cities that were affected by that veto.
Thank you, Supervisor Stone. Supervisor Ashley.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Benoit. You've got a real tough job up there doing that. Supervisor Stone, is, you know, is frustration I share. I share. It's really difficult. I understand that. We have, all have a city, all of us except you, Supervisor Benoit, and your son's on the council, so you're involved, we're all emotionally involved. And our cities are being affected, the cities, you know, where, you know, where people live, work, own property, trying to run businesses and so forth, and the city services are very important. And they're going to be curtailed, and then there might be a city or two that just won't make it. And that is going to fall back on the county, and we're going to have a terrific burden. And then if we say, well, we'll help them out, you know, we don't really have a lot of flex in our general fund, you know, our help is going to be difficult to find, you know, to find a place to help them, just to get the wherewithal to help them. One thing about CSAC, remember, this is a, you know, clearly almost overwhelming liberal state. CSAC's going to reflect the people, its members, and that's just the way it's going to be. They're going to be for, you know, for taxes, they're going to be for things like this. They're going to be progressive and in the liberal sense. That's just the way it is. So all we can do is do the best we can to try to point out the other side, and occasionally maybe we can win a battle. But I wager, if you go to the League of Cities, you're all yelling about this decision. They get the same liberal bias. It just happens to be, you know, they were standing up for city. It wasn't a, it wasn't a tax issue to them. And the governor, I think he probably was heavily influenced by CSAC because CSAC has reached out and worked with him, or the League of Cities has slapped you in the face earlier, and he hasn't got over that. So he slapped back, and, well, I don't know when that fight's ever going to resolve itself. And it's, it's going to be very difficult to do. Anyway, I support the motion. Supervisor Benoit, good luck to you. Maybe we ought to be working, try to work hard through the urban caucus, which has the large counties. We might have a better chance there, even though their biases somewhat similar.
Yes, maybe more so. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think bringing up a good point, Supervisor Ashley, even the urban counties, the 12 counties took a position to, the 12 large counties took a position not to support 1098, or to support the veto of 1098. Correct me, please allow me to be corrected. I think also, I wasn't at the board meeting, Supervisor Benoit, but when the issue of the governor's initiative came up, if it was, if it was a repeat of what kind of dialogue I have heard of the board of CSAC in recent years, it wasn't necessarily the tax increase, it was the constitutional provisions for the protection of realignment that they were most concerned with, and that I surely understand.
But we do have a motion on the floor. Do, I'll second the motion. Please vote.
Motion is unanimous. Congratulations, Supervisor Benoit. Now you get to be back in Sacramento doing.
I can do this as well.
Thank you. Different things in Sacramento, with an understanding of what takes place in the halls. We approved item 3.30 on the bilateral trade agreement with Vancouver, British Columbia. I just real quickly wanted to mention, once again, Tom Freeman, Economic Development Agency, great job. This is just another avenue for our companies in Riverside County to establish and sell their goods and services to another country. It's creating more jobs. Well, we have 160 companies here, I think, that do business with Canada, Tom, something like that?
130. And I just want to congratulate you for the fine job you're doing over there in our foreign trade office. Great work. Next item is item 3.31. Supervisor Ashley and Supervisor Stone.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor. Chair, Mr. Chairman, you know, there's, I'm going to, we have a resolution we're approving today to support the autism playbook. And it's a product, the Autism Task Force, to help address the health crisis. I'm going to paraphrase the resolution, and Supervisor Stone, I'll probably comment more. Autism occurs in all racial, ethnic, and social, economic groups, and it's more times more likely to occur in boys than girls. And then the statistics usually, 1 in 155 is down like, you know, maybe as low as 1 in 55 is getting to, it's very prevalent. And there's probably not a family out there that doesn't have an autistic child somewhere in their extended family. And with my family, we have three. There's more autistic children ever are entering, now entering the school systems, utilizing their recreation programs, entering the workforce. More families are having difficulty finding resources to assist them with autistic children. These costs are expensive and have just bankrupt and break up the marriage even quicker than almost anything. Families are finding it difficult to participate in normal social activities because of their child's special needs. In order for individuals with autism to be fully integrated into the community, businesses need to be educated about appropriate accommodations. Thousands of families have a child with autism who are reaching adulthood without resources to help them make that transition. The city of Temecula, God bless the name of this action, Mike Nigard, launched the Southwest California Autism Task Force in 2010 with the intent of educating the community about the growing public health crisis surrounding autism. As a result of the work of the Southwest California Autism Task Force, and Supervisor Stone and I both have served on, an autism playbook has been drafted to assist communities in educating their citizens about this public health crisis, provide a framework to address the special needs of the autistic communities. And our, our action today would be that Riverside County Board of Supervisors support and promote the use and dissemination of information in autism playbook with the goal of educating communities, helping determine how to match needs, existing resources, and how to develop programs that focus on improving lives of this special need population. And this playbook is fantastic. Is it anybody that suddenly realizes they're facing the situation, and will tell them what's going on, and tell them where to go, where to get the resources, what to do? And it takes that uncertainty out. Where to get help? And help is growing. It is really growing, and I think a lot because of this ground grassroots movement that started down in the Southwest. Supervisor Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for inviting me to participate in this resolution. This is a public health crisis autism. I think it's much more prevalent than many of our citizens understand, and you certainly don't understand it until a friend or a family member has a baby that is diagnosed with autism. Treatment is very expensive. The care for these children is time-consuming. There's always issues with the public school system and getting the appropriate attention that they need. And this playbook is going to help us educate the communities throughout Riverside County. And this, by the way, as Supervisor Ashley said, is predominant in boys, but it goes across all races and creeds and colors. It's not specific to any one group. There have been statistics that say it's as high as 1 in 55. I've seen studies that say it's 1 in every 75 kids born in the United States. So it's going to be local boards like ours that are going to express the crisis that we face with this, so that we can get state funding and federal funding to support these families and to support research with perinatal treatments that hopefully can identify genes associated with autism, so that we can take advantage of the growing technology that we have in the womb today and hopefully spare future generations with the unfortunate fortunesses of having a child with autism. And so, you know, I feel God has blessed me with my four kids, and I have a grandchild, my first grandchild, on the way that I hope and pray will be healthy. But autism can affect any one of us at any time with our children, our grandchildren having children, and I see the pain on the faces of parents and grandparents with our autistic children and the challenges they face. You know, I've talked with Supervisor Ashley and about his grandchildren. I've talked with my friend Mike Nigard about his child. I've talked with Sam Alhadith about his child and the love they have for these children and the concern that they have. And so I'm delighted that this board is going to be unanimous in our support for this playbook so that we can educate the community and make this issue well-known, so that we can attract funding for the research and ultimately, a prevention or a cure for future generations to look forward to, so that we can stop this crisis. And all move approve?
We do have a speaker. First, before we get our speaker, Mr. Orr.
I appreciate the supervisors bringing this forward. As you know, we're making public health one of our major initiatives, and we'll make sure this is in the county's public health initiative. This is, as you supervisors have spoken, is so important to our communities. I know my wife is a teacher, and how many autistic children are mainstreamed into education now and the challenges that we face. So this is going to be a major emphasis in our public health initiative. Appreciate it.